Okay, welcome to the September 8th Borough Council meeting. Anyone wishing to address council?
Yeah, I'm just gonna ask again, you know, any new developments on the sale of sewer?
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for me.
Anybody else? Ron?
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is John Heidock. I've been a resident of Mountain Joe Borough for more than twenty-five years. And for more than twenty-five years, our taxpayers have paid twenty-four man-hours per day in wages to operate the town sewer plant and maintain the borough properties and streets. The sewer paid four hours per day for Rod, four hours per day for Kevin, and four hours per day for Barb. And the taxpayers from the borough money paid four hours per day for Rod maintenance supervisor, four hours per day Kevin maintenance helper, and four hours per day Barb sewer secretary. So totaled, between the borough and the sewer, we operated for more than twenty-five years at twenty-four man-hours per day of wages. And the borough and the sewer split the benefits. So the taxpayers, the borough was paying twelve man-hours per day and half of the benefits. The sewer was paying twelve hours, man-hours per day and half the benefits. And now, we pay eight hours per day, borough manager slash secretary, eight hours per day maintenance supervisor, four hours per day maintenance helper, which I believe John is four hours per day, uh, four hours per day sewer plant helper, John, uh, which adds up to the twenty-four hours. Now, in addition to this position that we traded for Mr. Morgan with full-time wages and health benefits, and we don't know how many hours he works or how much money he makes because that's very difficult information to get, plus in addition to the each group, uh, for the licensed operator that will pay. And so, so since this operating cost due to mortgage wages and benefits and the added cost of the licensed operator has driven up property taxes for the taxpayers, the last tax increase wasn't even in the newspaper and many residents didn't even know about it, so the tax bills came in the mail. So last Tuesday on September 2nd of 2025, I observed Rick and John using the sewer inspection camera in the Legion parking lot doing work for the town sewer collection system. And I paused him for that. What I did not see was Mr. Morgan there and both his vehicles were in his driveway as usual every day until almost noon. And so I'm here to question this. What is Mr. Morgan's scheduled work hours? What is Mr. Morgan's scheduled work days? What is Mr. Morgan's pay? Who does Mr. Morgan report to? Who is responsible to oversee if Mr. Morgan even goes to work or not? So I have some photos here I'd like to share with you. These are photos from a game camera installed on the Lexus pole on 12/18/24 after receiving permission from a borough council member. And these photos show the entrance to the office chlorine building at the town sewer plant. Inside this building is an office desk and a chlorine tank with chlorine pumps. The pump pumps liquid sodium hypochlorite to the chlorine disinfection tank below to kill the bacteria and living organisms before they leave the plant when that water flows to the Kenzo Creek. As the discharge water flow changes, the chlorine pumps must be adjusted. If the water flow goes up, then you must adjust the chlorine injection pumps to increase the amount of chlorine to meet the demand. The goal here is to inject enough chlorine to kill the living organisms and the bacteria, but not too much, or you could kill or damage aquatic life downstream. The maximum amount of chlorine residual after a demand has been met is clearly marked in the NPDES permit. If the water flow leaving the plant goes down, it is critical that the disinfection process is turned down as well and periodic testing done throughout the day to make sure that you got it right. That way you're not overchlorinating the water and killing anything downstream. The level of chlorine has to be monitored in the tank so that the tank doesn't run dry. When I worked there, the tank had to be filled approximately every six days depending on the flow. So these pictures here that I'm gonna show you in this first illustration are pictures of the, of the disinfection building. That's what this is here. And there's a picture of the doorway right there if anybody wants to see it. That's the door. In the front of the door is a big snowdrift. And so, so that picture, this camera takes pictures when there's motion in front of it. And if there's no motion, it's programmed to take a test photo every day at 4:30 PM. So every one of these is a day. There's three weeks here. And in three weeks, there's been no motion in front of that door at all. And, and, and the proof is by the big snowdrift in front of the door with no footprints and no tire tracks going to it. Now, what I'd like to clarify here is, uh, in, in, in this amount of days from 12/18/2024 to 1/7 of 2025, somebody's getting paid to go in there and make adjustments inside that building and to fill up that chlorine tank to make sure that the disinfection is done properly. And, and you can see here clearly that there's no footprints in front of the door. Every single day, there's no footprints. Every one of these has a timestamp of a different day. And, and so, and so, uh, on the very next day, on the very next day, after the last day on there, which is, uh, January 8th, that ends on the 7th. On the 7th, the DEP Melanie Lewis called Mr. Morgan and said, "I'm coming tomorrow to do a plant inspection." And voila, Mr. Morgan shows up. The day before the DEP comes, yeah, there he is. And you know what he's doing? He's going into this room that he has not been in in weeks. And he's getting, and he's getting the dissolved oxygen meter so he could take it down to the affluent building and hook it up so he can show Melanie tomorrow that he's been using it every day to get the readings. But she has not been because it's been in this building for weeks. And, and so, so the point that I'm trying to make is, here's a violation that Melanie Lewis says. Operator failed to comply with Act or Chapter 302 regulations. Failure of certified operator to establish and provide oversight for record-keeping treatment, plant operations, sampling procedures, and pump station operation. Melanie Lewis told me with her own lips that there has been no, there has been no records of composite sampler operation for five years. Now, now how does that happen? Because, because nobody's overseeing anybody here. And, and the each group got a violation for not overseeing them. But for this, if you're gonna hire the each group to run your sewer plant, then each group should hire the employee to run the sewer plant because then they have somebody to answer to. Unfortunately, uh, it's a conflict of interest, but Mr. Morgan is the boss of, of the other employees. And anytime he doesn't wanna go down there, he can just tell John to go down and do whatever. And everybody's working under the each group license. So if we have total plant failure, Mr. Morgan has no responsibility because responsibility falls on the person with the license. Because he could say, "I didn't know." When she asked him, "Do you know how to work the samplers?", his answer was, "Um, I know how to turn them up and on." That's all he, that's his, "After five years, I'm supposed to be using them every week." He says, "All I know is how to turn them up and on." So, so I got into, in this report, her interview, and I can't go over that because I'm gonna be over my five minutes.
Well, you're already over five, so...
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time.
Anything you want to say in conclusion?
I'd like an answer to my question of why Mr. Morgan gets a paycheck and doesn't have to go to work and do anything.
I'd like to know how you figure he's a full-time employee, number one.
Cause I don't get to see his time card, his paycheck or his time card. How would I know? It's getting full-time benefits. I mean, the personnel policy...
He pays...
He pays two-thirds of that insurance.
The personnel policy says you don't receive benefits unless you work full-time.
It was an agreement that they made.
An agreement, that's what I mean. Why do you have a special...
And we've, we've changed that multiple times. Uh, I find it hilarious that I wasn't down there to run the camera. Marty, you were there, weren't you?
You were there.
Was, was I there last week running the camera?
On, on Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was in the parking lot in the area behind, below the Legion at that time.
I think it was Thursday, wasn't it? Yeah, cause I had to go to one of my other jobs.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Last week was a holiday. We moved, moved into this area.
Yeah.
I'm talking about Tuesday.
Oh, Tuesday. It was Tuesday, yeah. One, one each group was here and, uh, I have three vehicles.
And that was the only day that we were in Camden last week.
So the two that were in my driveway, you know, some people have three vehicles. I do. So I was there.
Yeah, so I saw you there, Rick and John and, yeah, and Marty and, and, you know, each group.
Well, when I was there, there was two people and Mr. Morgan wasn't one of them. And unfortunately, I didn't take picture.
I was there all the time. Brian Sees was even there. He stopped by. Uh, as far as the chlorine building goes, uh, I don't feed it the same way that you do. I feed it neat out of a 55-gallon drum and I have it adjusted lower. Um, we've never had a problem. I think one time in five years, we've had a bacteria hit. We've not been over our limit or under the limit. Um, you used to fill it out of the pond with a pump and cut it into the large tank in there. You don't do that anymore. Uh, as far as the DO meter is concerned, I use it every day and it lives down in the shed at the bottom. So maybe I had it with me, but it's just wrong. So...
And when you got out of the truck, you didn't have it with you when you got back in the truck?
Well, I, I didn't look at it and I'm not exactly certain. I actually don't have the same DO meter that you used to have. I have a new one. So I don't know if I was bringing that one because the probe tip wasn't working as correctly and had a different one to check it or what. I don't know. I didn't look at them, so...
So how can you explain the snowdrift in front of the door every day for three weeks in there?
Cause I didn't go in there. And that's what the violation said. You need to go check it once a week. So we did a new SOP and changed it. We had no problems. I also passed two full inspections in the five years I was here with no complaints about, uh, records as far as the auto samplers or anything else. We've been through two full inspections and until somebody was down there stocking me with cameras and causing problems for the town, we didn't have any problem. And then it came up and they said, "Well, we wanna change this." So we put it all together and now we have a new SOP that we take care of things. So, yep, I wasn't in there for three weeks. You're right. Because I feed it neat and I don't need to be in there, but every sixty days. Uh, as far as up and down in winter time, we're usually around a hundred thousand gallons a day. In the summer, it's a little different. Um, but we're not missing samples. Of course, I've also been accused of doctoring samples with water bottles in the past, so, you know, I don't think anything that I'll say will get through to you that we're taking care of it and doing it the way that we need to. That's my answer and I'm not gonna beat on it anymore.
I just find it suspect that you can't show up for three weeks and not knowing the ins and outs of that whole operation.
Show up for three, go in that building for three weeks.
Well, okay, you didn't go in that building for three weeks.
I test chlorine daily at the bottom. If it doesn't need adjusting, why would I go in the building? It's working.
Am I allowed to respond to that?
I'd like to hear what you have to say because I don't know any of this talking.
Well, one day that he says that the disinfection was off was the one day that Melanie Lewis came and actually, and actually looked at the report after, after this inspection and said, "This is how you gotta do it." Because the fecal sample has to be taken and has to be at the lab within eight hours from the time that has to be in the ink drawer at the lab within eight hours from the time that it is drawn. And, and, and so, Mr. Morgan's answer is, "Oh, he's not doing the fecal sampling. The lab people are doing it." Because I have photos of him putting the samples in the refrigerator more than twenty-four hours in advance and, and the samples would be expired, so...
I don't take the fecal. The lab takes the fecal. That way it's within the eight hours. I take the other ones because they have a longer hold time. You know this.
Cause you're not down there.
Oh, you're full of shit. I'm not dealing with this.
All right. Your time's up.
Well, I think as long as there's questions, we do have to deal with it.
Well, I don't think we do, no.
That's what we're here for.
I appreciate that, but I'm not gonna sit here and be bombarded with a bunch of questions because you don't believe me and he doesn't, you know?
I'm not saying I don't believe anybody. I'm not saying I don't believe.
Pretty sure you don't.
All I'm saying is I don't have any, I like to have only information before I make a decision. I don't believe in broad, you know, public...
I'm not gonna sit here in our meeting and get, get up over this shit for the last six years, the same stuff all the time. I'm not doing it.
Personnel policy says time cards.
Pretty sure he's not.
We're getting too close to, like, this is a borough employee. I think we're just starting to breach just a little too close to person's job description, what they're supposed to be doing, like, that they should not be discussing other.
Why are your job descriptions private?
Frank, we are talking about a borough employee very, uh...
Detailed.
Yes, very detailed out here in public. So I think maybe if discussion needs to go further, we should go to the other room.
Well, I think that we should probably redo the personnel policy because it's been brought up for the last year and a half and it's never been changed. We've paid other employees, part-time employees, part-time, uh, benefits, but we haven't changed it. It's situational. And every time Governor Walperco says it or the personnel policy says this, we have to change it. So we need to update it and we should have, and we have it. And Chuck was working on it and it didn't happen. It needs to. That's fine. I don't have a problem.
Just a little transparency does a long way. This isn't, you know, Kentucky Fried Chicken secret recipe or anything. It's out, you know, he's out and about doing stuff. It's not anything that's, um...
Like anybody that's watched this meeting has seen, we've answered a million questions, the same ones all the time.
It's borderline breaching. There's a difference between a response and an answer. An answer resolves everything. A response, maybe, maybe not. And apparently nothing's been resolved because there are a lot of questions.
Teresa?
Can you explain to me what feeding it neat is? What, what's this process? Cause I'm trying to understand what it is.
I feed it directly from a 55-gallon drum with a metering pump. Uh, I don't, the way it used to be done was they would take a certain amount, add it to the tank and add water. This tank's probably a 200-gallon tank. And fill it up and dose it that way. The way I do it is I inject the 12.5% sodium hypochlorate with a, uh, metering pump directly into line no kind.
Thank you.
So what's the operational range of this metering pump?
Couldn't tell you, but I know that it works and I know that we need our NPDES permit.
Okay, any other questions from the public or questions from the public? If not, public response is closed. Okay, Mary?
All right. I know that I flagged, um, in May when I submitted the grant for the park about the match. I think we, like, verbally discussed it, but the resolution that has to be signed, um, wasn't formally voted on. So, um, the contact we have with the state is asking for a formal resolution. So if you all are comfortable with it, and know we had talked about it, but, um, the match is for $11,670, which is, um, can also be contributed in kind through our borough employees' assistance with clearing things at the park and, you know, assisting the contractors. So if everyone is comfortable with that amount, um, I think, I think we did talk about it when we found a particular fund, right? I'm not, I can't quite remember when we talked about it last time, but, um, anyways, that's the match that's asked for for the grant that I applied for. Obviously, if we're not comfortable with that amount of money and sorry to bore everybody on the spot, this sort of happened in the last, um, couple weeks. But anyways, that's the, um, the amount for the match for the grant. The grant that I applied for is like $76,000, so, um, you know, it's, it's...
So we need a resolution?
Yeah, we just need to vote on it and then we'll submit a resolution.
I'm gonna choose to do a resolution on it. I'll second. Could I have a second? Jesse? Motion made by Frank, seconded by Jesse. Everybody in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried.
Great, thank you guys so much. I appreciate that. And I know, um, like, when I talked to the contact, um, he said that they would have a decision sometime in September, so hopefully we'll, I'll get that, um, just submitted and then we'll know about the grant. But, um, otherwise, I don't have, um, too much. I know Bridge West is coming up. I think so, thanks to the fire department. I know they'll be very involved if there's a chicken barbecue, right, they're doing?
Ham and chicken.
Ham and chicken. Our, our guys are doing a boot drive. We have cantuses with more traffic, so...
Oh, good, 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 yeah. Well, just good luck in advance and thanks for doing that. And there'll be lots of traffic. It's always a busy one, so that's all for me.
Thank you. Do we have to have a motion except?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Second. The motion made by Brett, seconded by...
Doesn't matter. Either one.
I don't know who was first. Jane, second it?
I heard Jesse.
Jesse, okay, Jesse second it. Everybody in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carried. Sewer maintenance report.
Well, we had an eventful month. We had issues at the park board pump station. Council construction came out, made a repair to the flange on one of our pumps, cleaned it out, and one of the pumps out there was starting to throw bearing. So that's been taken up to case biking for potential repair. New pump's been put in. Camera the line last week, Marty. And then we're gonna be doing some more on Wednesday. John, if you'd like to take pictures, you can come down, see me and Marty.
No need for sarcasm.
Oh, I don't give a shit.
That is unnecessary.
And we have issue with the east end pump station. We had it backed out by T and G, uh, pipe services. Lot of rags. I can't implore the people in the town enough to stop using the flushable wipes. They're flushable, they're not biodegradable, caused a large problem in the pump station manhole. Luckily, it was caught in time. We were doing our inspections, the, uh, manhole by the pump station was not full, but it wasn't emptying as it should be. And, uh, gotta keep on top of that, have it cleaned out. Other than that, things been going pretty good.
Anything that, that question?
Since they ended and ended.
Well, I didn't know if there's, like, been a sudden influx or...
No.
No, I, I remember my brother Gary talking about, uh, when he was on council here, the problems that they had with those flushable wipes and stuff.
You put them up like a notice or something? Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's like, yeah.
Uh, they just marketed them that they're flushable now. It used to be baby wipes, but now it's, everybody's using. That's ridiculous.
I have a comment on that, if I'd be permitted.
Sure.
The flushable wipes have always been a problem down at the east end pump station. There's grates that catch the wipes before the pumps suck them up to prevent damage to the impellers. And, uh, when Rod was the supervisor and, and when I was the supervisor and, uh, plant operator, we'd go down there on a monthly basis and take the Bobcat tractor down there. And there was a tool down there and you lower the meter down to measure the gases, make sure it's safe, put the safety strap on, and we lowered the tool down and we scooped the rags out and we put them in the bucket, dump them into the tractor and take them to the lagoons, dump them into the sand filters, let the sun dry them out. Rain would rinse them off, sun would dry them out. We'd take them to the landfill and it was free. And we did it every month. And, and the reason that it gets to the problem where we gotta keep hiring very expensive contractors at $300 an hour is because nobody's maintaining the, removing the rags from the grates and rinsing it down like it should be done. When Kevin was here, he rinsed that every Friday. And, and, and Rod and I did it once per month. And when Rod was gone, I did it once per month. And it hasn't been done for five years, except for when it plugs. It's called reactive maintenance, like I talked about before. Instead of preventive maintenance, we wait until something plugs up and then it's reactive maintenance and then we hire a contractor to fix it. And it costs the taxpayers a lot more money to hire, hire contractors.
Should we maybe start doing that?
We have it cleaned once a year and this wasn't a plug in the grates, it was plugged in the manhole, not in the grates in the building.
Son, I was just trying to think, you said once a year?
Yeah.
And how often did it run?
Once a month.
Once a month.
And then we never had to hire a contractor to vac, vacuum that out because we maintained it ourselves. No different than the generator battery. When the power went out, I knew to check the generator, but I don't work there.
Maybe it'd be done once a quarter?
All right.
To prevent...
We'll, we'll look into it.
I was just wondering, I don't know how much this...
All right, I passed up on the maintenance report there.
Did you get a motion and a second for the sewers? For the sewer maintenance report? We'll finish that one up.
Motion accepted. Most by Jesse, second? Any? Most remain second. Everybody in favor, say aye. Posed? Motion carried? Okay, take a look at the maintenance report. Let's just send up everybody ahead of time. It should be, take a little bit of time to get these things over.
I'll second. I do just wanna call out for the maintenance people, the handicap spots, the manholes.
I just felt that, that blue stood, would stand out better. So I asked them if they'd take the blue paint up and, and do those and, you know, instead of just doing like the, uh, when we had the sidewalks put in, the stages mandated, they just put the white around it and the white handicap thing in the center. I just think the blue stands out better, so I asked them to do that.
I think that's if we could get something to the post office too, where there's no parking at any time, you beat the park there and you can't see the pullout and then somebody's trying to cross the street. It's just, I, I don't know what to do to solve that, but it really is bad when people walk in.
And I've even questioned people that I know that have no issue about getting out and being able to walk half mile if they have to, you know? And they park, pull right up there on the face of the, out in front of the post office and facing out the left side of the crosswalk.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah, it's, it's frustrating. And people, when I'd say something, they'd look at me like a deer in a headlights, you know, look, uh...
Maybe we should put the sign right in the middle of where the parking?
Lot of them are...
Then we'll probably lose the sign.
I'm pretty sure. They, they think they just come up and run in and get their mail and so they don't have to park.
We'll probably just lose the sign if we do that.
Well, that's...
Somebody will run it over or...
The way vehicles are made nowadays, that'd be an expensive little hit.
Okay. All right, I have a motion. I think you, somebody second it?
I second it.
Jesse second it? Everybody in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion. Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Borough maintenance management report.
Um, okay, well, I was doing the borough and sewer audits. I had mentioned to the auditors how unhappy I was with QuickBooks Online. Um, I was told at the time that they, when they weren't going to support desktop, that I would have to go online to get payroll. Um, that is untrue. Uh, the auditors told me they could help me go back to desktop and, um, I agreed to have them do that. And by going back to desktop, the sewer and the borough, um, can use the same license because there's only one person using it at a time. So we can split that cost between the two. Um, I'll get a refund for online. I was refunded for, uh, the sewer and, um, the old one, cause we had to go up to get payroll. And so we'll have to reimburse the sewer for part of that from the borough. Um, I forwarded everybody information for the McWapix. Just let me know by the 17th if you plan on going.
That's, that's in Kane, right?
Yes, yes.
Where is it? Could be held.
The sixth.
Oh, in sixth, yeah, good.
Um, I forwarded everybody the minimum, the minimum municipal obligation for the 2026 year. Uh, the borough will not need to budget anything, budget anything for the employees' pension, um, what they would have to put in the state aid covers. Um, the local share grant is open until November 30th. There's a hundred dollar application fee. Um, I'd like to apply for a track mower for the sewer that'll make it safer and quicker to take care of the banks. If you guys are okay with it, uh, there's no matches, it's just, it's money that comes from the, the gambling, the gaming.
Barb, is that the same one that you put in for two years ago or?
Yeah. Um, it's, the tractor's different for the sewer. But, um, it'll require a resolution to be passed included in, and it's included in the application. Um, if you guys are okay with applying for something, we could go ahead and say that we'll pass the resolution.
What makes this track mower safer?
It's got traps instead of wheels.
Is it wider?
Pardon me?
Is it wider, more stable, lower to the ground?
It's made for hills, so...
Okay.
Me, I can give you the information. You can look at it. It's a $21,000 mower. Um, the guys went and looked at it. I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, I don't care one way or another.
I think you should go for it.
Um, I sent, I sent quite a few code violation letters out. Most of them taken care of. Um, I still have a few that are outstanding, but I'm working on it. That's all I got.
All, all motion, sign the resolution.
To what?
Sign the resolution.
Yeah. All right, I have a motion on the floor, second it?
Second.
Hold on, second is it? Everybody in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried.
Make a motion to accept the borough manager's report.
What's going on with the billing software, was that taken care of?
Um, no, we never changed it because nobody ever said, it just kinda got dropped. Whether we were gonna, we were only gonna get it if we were going to usage instead of flat rate.
Do we need to get it? Was there one recommended?
I didn't recommend either one, they were both about eighteen thousand dollars, so. Yeah.
I think truthfully, if we go that route, I could reach out to a computer science buddy that could program. Probably get a significant discount from that eighteen thousand, if, if that's another route we need to go.
What, the old software?
Basically, I could have him recreate the old software, because I was able to get all the visuals and then.
The old software was wonderful, I mean, it was, it was easy, it was quick.
Is that coffee made in software? I'm just wondering.
There, there can't be, the, the guy died, his son died. It was just like a.
It was a local person.
I don't hear that software.
Pardon me?
Just a random one guy. But we can, I can reach out to him, if you'd like to go that route, I mean, we still haven't gone to.
Well, maybe, maybe reach out and see what it would take to do it and what he would charge to do it.
It'd be best to roll it out January one, so.
Yeah, I wouldn't do it in the middle of it.
We'll get it figured out.
I don't reach out. He's a comp site engineer, I believe.
If you get something by next month, you might be able to do something. We're gonna have to figure out what we're gonna charge per gallon and per thousand gallon. And we're gonna have to get ahold of Aqua to see about getting the reeds and how quickly they'd be able to do that and.
Yeah, because we're gonna have to pay for the reeds, we're not gonna get them for nothing.
Because the, the databases won't be hard, we can just swap those over and then we have all the information there, but the the interface, we can probably try to match, so it's kinda close to how it was essentially is my thought process. But I'll reach out to him, I'll make sure to note that, reach out.
Have that stuff for next meeting to decide what we.
He made the motion, I seconded it, to accept the borough manager's report.
Okay, motion been made, second it, everybody in favor said aye? Everybody opposed? Motion carried. Okay, two more minutes, everybody took time to read those over when they were sent email to you.
Motion to accept the.
Okay, motion been made by Jesse, second by Brett. Everybody in favor, say aye? Everybody opposed? Okay, approval of the treasury report and payment of bills to the borough. Brett, I have, before we. Carrie's long care. Charged a thousand bucks there for. And I would think before we do anything, that, I mean, if you happen to talk to her, that before we start anything in the spring, that we're gonna have a sit down, talk and go over some stuff, because I was not happy of seeing that bill for the amount of hours she was up here doing that.
Yeah, it's been how much they've charged since I can remember, but it's.
She's up the fees.
Yeah.
A little bit from the.
Each year, a little bit each year.
I mean, I, it's understandable, things go up, but I still would like to.
Oh, I don't have a problem with it, I don't, I mean, we've, we've fired, I think, three different landscapers because of always.
Right, right. The first one we had, it just kept jacking the prices way up.
Yeah, one or two, this is the fourth different landscaper?
I mentally had kinda paid attention to the hour, but now I'm just, you know, kinda drawing blanks on what it was.
Was it a part of the day or a couple days?
Part of the day, I mean, they do both, no, it's two to three. But then they also do the signs at the end of town, information booth and the Heritage Park. I know she gets hold me and says, hey, I stopped up my sprays of weeds today or whatever, so there's not as much, but.
I'd just like to before we.
In the spring?
In the spring, remind her.
Is that like mulch and everything, or is this just?
Well, they do the big mulch in the, in the spring, I think that's a thousand. And then they do a cleanup for the festival, that's a thousand, maybe just.
This is the least amount of service of, before the festival, that's the least amount we pay, is that thousand. There's more, in this, when the first, for the spring, you know, there's a lot more to do, so naturally it's gonna be more. I would just like to.
So this was basically a touch up kind of?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, Brett, your little motion. Okay, motion on the floor to accept the treasury report and payment of bills, anybody second that? Annie? Sorry, I saw her lip. Second by Annie Wolf. Everybody in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? Okay, financial reports and payment of bills for the sewer.
Motion to accept the sewer and pay bills. Financial reports, pay bills.
Okay, motion been made by Jesse. Second by Brett, anybody, everybody in favor, say aye? Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right, committee reports. Maintenance of the streets and buildings.
Don't have anything right now, for the most part, um, once the paving season ends, I recommend that we get the price to do Center Street, not along with the driveway, the fire hall, but I think it'd be premature to try and bid it until. Get a price till we got next year's, but if we can put it out, make the motion and do all the stuff before December, so that we have it. And then we'll be ready to go first thing in the spring.
All right, um, you have, you was at that pre-construction meeting for the, uh, west end with the water. What was the, what was said as far as the repaving and stuff, what was gonna happen with?
Uh, that didn't come up, but.
That's her responsibility, right?
My personal experience with Aqua is that, and, and the state, they're gonna make them pave that before the October deadline for paving.
Well, that's why I was curious, I have so many people, myself included, very upset with when you come up across that, you know, washboard system, you know, coming into town.
I'm sure the state's not gonna let them do it that way.
Well, I hope not, because first off, they get.
I don't know what they did over in Kingsville, it's been like that for a while.
I don't, and I think the state did that.
Yeah.
Yeah. When they do it, it's different.
Yeah.
But I can reach out, especially, you know, I've got the.
Well, I'd like to try, have some idea.
You could ask.
I'll talk to the guy from Wilson.
What's that?
That's right, there's a media on the twelve.
You have a media on the twelve with them.
I, I think that was actually for the repair of the holes, isn't it?
I think so.
Yeah, so I'll ask.
All right, I'll, I'll go ahead and bring under new business there, broken underground pipe on the west end there when they were digging. They said that we have a cross pipe, it's, they said it's.
Yeah.
Bad, but how would they even know to begin with, how would they know if they didn't dig down onto it?
Oh, they did, they dug through it.
I mean, right.
They broke it.
Right, and they're trying to say, it was brought it out and it's our, it's our problem.
I don't know if Rick went out and looked at it or not, but they dug through it, assuming it was abandoned.
No, no, I don't mean the one up by the, uh, overpass, or, you know, the railroad overpass, one out there by, across from Ginkels or across from.
Well, I think that's, that was, that was the first one they dug through.
He didn't look at it because they covered it under, over before, remember?
They called the state.
They called the state.
And the state said it was.
But they had already covered it over.
State contacted us and so.
Sounds like a stellar bunch.
Yeah, you know.
It's supposed to be marked, one call, somebody's supposed to go up there and mark our sewer line.
It wasn't the sewer line.
Storm, missed out on a ton of shit on me, but it wasn't, wasn't that. We don't have any, uh, maps of where this stuff is, the state put them in when they built the road and then they just said, anything underneath the road is the borough's responsibility. Figure it out. So, they called state, state says we need to repair it. So I think what we need to do, and we have to think about it through the winter, we're working on that project down on the east end with, trying to put in the grants for Gary's problem. If we've gotta redo it, tie them in, because I know there's a couple other catch basins underneath Route Six and they're in bad shape as well. We had the problem.
I can't imagine a lot of them are, you know.
Well, I know, because they were put in a million years ago.
Uh, but it was, you know, was it where they redid it and put the, uh, metal in, you know, the across, all the concrete ones are gone. But it was just frustrating of, uh.
Yeah. But, I mean, I think.
But, you know, I mean, with Wilson, I still think it should be their responsibility to dig that back up and put a patch on the top of it, at least for now.
Well, the problem is, if it wasn't marked, and it was marked as a ban, you know, wasn't marked at all, it was abandoned, they wouldn't know and.
And it went out by Ginkels?
None of them were marked.
But I didn't think something like that had to be marked to cover the drainage.
Yeah, storm, storm drainage needs to be, needs to be marked. And, you know, the problem is, when you don't know that they exist, like Borough doesn't, you guys don't have any sort of mapping or anything of where they are, so. There, there's just not a whole hell of a lot you can do.
Yeah.
And now that the state knows it's broken, it probably was collapsed, wasn't working anyhow, but the state doesn't care. So we'll have to evaluate it, go out there and rein and see if it's actually causes a problem, we're gonna pull up or, you know. Is it an immediate problem or not?
Well, I could tell you that there's a resident out there that said that he's had a lot of trouble since it's been broken.
So it's new?
So.
Okay, well, we'll have to look at it.
Since they broke it?
Since it's been broken.
Okay.
Who did Wilson hire to do the locating?
They don't.
They didn't do any locating at all?
That's not their responsibility. It's the responsibility of the municipality. Or the utility.
The whole thing is, when they go to replace that, like to fix the road that it's, how it's supposed to be fixed, it'll be open then, you could fix it then. So it wouldn't be an additional dig, it would be, okay, you guys have, I mean, speak with them. You have that open, can you slide that pipe in for us?
Well, I have to go look.
And it might be, hey, yeah, we can do, it's gonna cost you a hundred bucks or whatever, and you get the pipe.
I'll talk with them on the twelfth, take a note of it, Barb, and we can talk to them, they don't know what the extent is or where it is, I haven't even seen it, so.
Well, I saw pictures when Fred Fitch came in, so.
He's a joy.
All right, finance and insurance.
Did you just say, what'd you just say?
I said, he's a joy.
We have a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar CD that comes due this month and.
September?
Yeah. And I think that what we should do with it is, uh, put it back in on a long term. If something, uh, comes up that we end up, we have to add part of it for one of the big projects that we're trying to do, the sidewalks or whatever, we can, we'll have to pay a penalty to, to cash, cash it out or pay, uh, you know, partially cash it out or whatever. But I think that at this point, where we're at with everything, I think that reinvesting it is probably the best.
What's the going rate?
I don't know, but I don't know, I'd have to ask them.
I thought maybe you might have talked to them.
It's gotta be done for, in September, by the end of September. No.
It'll be put back in the money market, but.
So do you wanna, do you want to put it into the highest CD rate, depending on what it is or?
What if the CD rate matches them? What we get, like click it?
Possibility.
Because you just throw it in there, who cares? If we notice that, because what are they gonna do, quarter interest rate drop, if they do that?
Something like that, probably, maybe.
We see that and you just turn around and then lock it, because now they're gonna just start dropping, most likely. Unless something weird happens and all of a sudden, I don't know, hyperinflation and whatever else.
Kinda like the idea of locking it up so we're not have to just break it and spend it.
Right, you know, that's spending, it's called self-control.
I get that, but that's who's controlling the things.
Whatever. We do what Barb would ask as far as the highest, get the highest.
Rate.
So we found.
Highest CD rate?
Yeah.
Throw it in, might be a two year, might be a, might be a five.
Well, I'll give you, I'll find out, I'll give you all an email before I do anything and I, and you guys, if somebody isn't happy with it, we can.
So we need the motion to lock it? Yeah. My motion, I guess. Okay, motion by Frank, second by Jesse, everybody in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. All right, Jesse, personnel.
Nothing to report on that.
Community development, planning and parks. Anything interesting, Jay? Nothing. Fire departments, anything there, Jay?
Scotty was gonna be here, but soccer. So, just, uh, we had a meeting last week, uh, just kinda doing basic maintenance on the trucks, the squad and the engines, you know, stuff to get them ready for inspection. Paige, uh, Logan, uh, Jesse, Sean, they're planning for fire prevention, so they're, um, getting everything ready to go to the, the preschools and such, so. And I'm pretty sure they're gonna go down to the library too, I think there's, they're, Courtney invited them to come down there as well, so that's gonna be cool. Talking about making repairs to the hall, um, just a couple more things, uh, the two doors in the truck room. Some of the gutters being repaired and then there's five windows in the fire hall itself and then one in the fire hall office that needs to be repaired, so they're gonna get bids for that. Tossing an idea around, Scotty's gonna get with Barb. They wanna do a give back for the community, um, and do fireworks around the actual Fourth of July holiday, but a smaller display, so they wanna get with Barb and talk about like, where would be the safest place to do that and just get some, like when I say small, like, you know, get like a thousand dollar package and, and set them off, you know, not like necessarily what we do for Swedish Fest, but just something to give back to the community, so that's good. And then, um, the house signs. So. Well, we're all just, we're, I mean, I'm working with the Bridge Foundation, getting this, uh, festival finished up. So anyway, the thought was maybe to see if, because right now it's me and Paige. If we could get some help with, from the borough crew, only if they have time. If the, if the borough crew could find some time to get the stakes in the ground after, you know, the one call is done and get it from the ice cream stand down in Martin Year, then Paige and I can actually put the house numbers out. But we don't think either one of us is really physically capable of dragging stakes.
How many hosts gotta go with?
A lot.
A lot.
Hundred and fifty, maybe?
That's a couple days' work.
Let's talk to Rick about it, you know, I don't wanna make any decisions, go out and see what he's got going on, you know what I mean?
Would they be, would they entertain over time?
I don't know that we need to go that far.
Well, I don't know, but if, I think if, if Brett did the PA one call, to where maybe it could take a couple hours.
Could maybe do one street.
Do a small chunk in a couple hours and then.
Is there a possibility that the fire hose is paid for the overtime? Because it's their project.
I mean, they're bigger size.
I, I, you know, how about, one, two, three, four, five? Let's talk to Rick and. Let's talk to Rick and see if they got time, I don't know that it's anything that needs to be voted on, we'll just talk to him and see if there, nobody really has a problem with it, they got time. You know, do a couple a day, Poplar Street, there's like six houses on it, you know, that shouldn't take long. Do some of those ones, start Martin gear drive, three houses. Just do little sections at a time and see. How about, the biggest thing is just getting the, the one calls done, mainly the gas lines.
Right.
Go from there and see, maybe they get a little driver or something, because they're not gonna be that far without two foot yourself.
Well, um, I think as far as getting it done, maybe do, as far as, so not everybody in the whole east end has their stuff marked out and we're not gonna get done in time.
Well, I think we'll do, we'll do it a, a street in a town.
Do Main Street down on the south side and then get that done and make a call for the.
They've already got the south side done, so it'd be the north side, like, okay.
No, is it all the way down?
Yeah, it should be, go all the way down to your.
Yeah, they're starting on that.
Yeah, they're starting on the other, because I already did one call once for the whole half town.
Pay attention to their house being marked.
Um, yeah, I'll talk to Rick and see what we've, you know, feels ambitious, a, a, a big enough chunk that wouldn't take too long. You think about it, like Poplar Street, you gotta be careful because Poplar Street, everything's buried detailing, so it's following, it's electric, like, that's a, that's a tough one. And you gotta stay, you know, a foot and a half away from the mark, so that, that one's gonna be a pain, but the rest of them, I think you just compete with gas for the most part. If nobody has a problem, I'll coordinate with Rick and Joan, we'll see what we can do.
Thank you.
All right, library hasn't met this month yet.
No, we didn't meet Wednesday.
This weekend, this Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday.
And we didn't have a meeting in August.
Right, so nothing on the libraries. Code enforcement, anything there?
Oh, yeah, Barb should send out some letters and take care of a couple things, nothing that.
All right, let, let, let's get a kind of fall under where I have uh use of constables. I talked to, during the Swedish Festival, I talked to, what was the guy you deal with?
Ron Tanner.
Ron Tanner?
Tanner.
He had asked me, uh, they're doing it for other municipalities, uh, they both went to school for it, did schooling on it. Um, as far as helping us with issues with uh uh ordinances and stuff. That uh, you know, I mean, Barb does, puts out letters and whatnot, you know, but if it has to go to the point of somebody going and looking into it, you know, they, they have the understanding and they've uh.
They're allowed to enforce.
Yeah, they're allowed to enforce that, so, you know, I just wanna see what the consensus of the council here is. If I was to sit down and have a meeting with them as far as how they wanna handle it on the cost and the things is what my concern is. You know, what the cost is gonna be, but I just, before I go further with it, I wanna see what everybody feels here, you know, in the council.
I think paying them whatever is better than possibly facing some kind of a.
Well, I told them it, it wouldn't happen this year, because we have to put it, you know, budget it in if it's gonna be money, so. I'll have Barb get a call to him and see when he can come and meet with me and, and I'll have Barb be on that to go over it and then I'll bring it back to next meeting, uh, November's meeting, if that's all right. But I just thought that might be a nice way to do it that, you know, like I said, he said they both have now have their full training, they're certified on it. So. How much should we pay for a part-time code enforcement? Can we remember?
Low rate you used to pay, I, I can't remember. I have to look at an old budget.
Yeah, I don't remember what that was.
Why not?
It was fifteen dollars an hour, I believe. What we budgeted for the year was fifteen.
It was like fifteen hours.
No, I mean, as far as.
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
Yeah, something like that.
Seventeen, I can't remember.
Well, I'll just get Barb to call and get, set up a meeting with them and then uh meet with them, see what their end of, you know, cost would be and maybe go over things as far as what we'd want them to be doing uh with that, you know, cause I think keep having her do the letters and uh whatnot, you know, keep the cost down on their end if we have her doing that. But when it comes to the point that it has to, you know, somebody's not compliant, you know, that's when we need them to come in. Sir, and how does that affect us liability insurance-wise, that they got their own net bill covered? I think, uh, that's something I'll have to ask.
Yeah.
What does your solicitor say about that?
But I'll, I'll get with them and see what, you know, what they carry and what, you know, what we'd have to have. You know, what they'd want and what they're expecting and bring some stuff back on November. And you said they do this without them municipalities? Yeah. Which ones? I did ask them. Be nice to know. Be interesting to see how they actually handle it. Yeah. And maybe they actually address their solicitor on it. Instead of us having to address, I don't know.
We'd have to take a vote on it, wouldn't we, for the solicitor, but don't we have to have them, like, through the, the permission of others before somebody goes to the solicitor?
No, I can go, I can go, yeah, I can go to them.
They don't even have the information, so once we get it.
Right, I'll have to get information on stuff before we, and I just wanna see what the consensus of y'all before I go forward with it and waste my time on where people aren't interested in seeing that happen.
We'll talk into it, and we can learn options and that way, you know, one way or the other, if it's something beneficial or.
All right. All right, sewer operations.
Um, I'm just gonna let Marty take it away, Marty from the script is here to, to present uh how he, his designs come along. Okay, um, we've prepared based off of everything in town that we're uh designing for a sewer line replacements. We have a, a lot of, when I say that, we have a number of questions because there's uh probably half a dozen different places where there's manholes are shown on the map, but they aren't visible on the ground, so we can't access them to find out depths and uh, so we're working on that currently with trying to videotape and find, try hopefully locate the different lines. Um, three of those are on Main Street, say from the top of this road to the, to the west over towards, is it Division Street overnight in? Um, uh, off of this manhole at the top of this street, there's a line coming in from both west and east. And there's also a line angled towards the fire company and then runs up through the fire company property. We don't have access to that line at all, as far as best we know, there's no line, there's no manholes anywhere on the line. That's the same with a line that jumps off of that and feeds houses over on Anderson Street or, or serves houses over on Anderson Street. That's supposedly below the fire hall. We're trying to, once again, locate those over uh the next few weeks, try to we're not gonna let it like that with the, with the upgrades, with our new replacements. We're gonna put in manholes. We wanna have permanent easements from the property owners indicating where those locations are with manholes with um, if there are lateral connections to them, we wanna be able to locate those uh easily and ultimately make this a, a, a system that is much better than existing. Um, one of the items, Main Street, say from, I don't know if it's clear to the bank, but clear over to Division Street. The lines are fifteen inch, eighteen inch in diameter. There's not a lot that flows into them. Typically, that, that line should be eight inch in diameter, or the larger it needs to be. Um, there's only been a couple places that I've ever put in more than an eight inch line, and that's because it was very flat. And we had to maintain slope on, on a line, but I guess, so-called in the old days when it was installed, it probably was a, a combined sewer and storm sewer line on Main Street, collecting all the ha, all the buildings with flat roofs. Very possible, those flat roofs used to go into the sewer and down the sewage plant. Um, hopefully those have been eliminated. We'd like to put a new line and replacing it with an eight inch line, gonna be much more affordable for new folks in uh uh in the re, from the reinstallation, but same time, we wanna eliminate a number of taps, connections on that line that aren't used any longer. Um, we could put Ys, what we call a Y into the line for a tap and cap it, if that would be the preference. But uh as we saw, the line that we've already televised, we found two extra taps on a line that was um, what, about three hundred and fifty feet long. So we can't, I, those are locations that infiltration's getting into your system and with no kind of co, so-called customer reimbursement to, to pay for those and ultimately the entire system's paying to treat that kind of water. And we wanna try and eliminate that if, uh, with this project as much as possible. So working with Brett and, and the guys um videotaping these lines, we wanna try to find them. We also have a lineup on High Street on, on, I say the far side of the hill in that direction. Um, I guess it's sorry, that direction. Um, the main map doesn't even show a line on Hill Street in that, in that area. And there's probably half of those houses. What's that?
Hill Street or High Street?
High Street. Hill Street's up this way, right?
Yeah, Hill Street's down there.
Hill Street's down there.
High, High Street's up here, at the top of the gallop. Okay.
That's the one.
Okay, but the, um, there's a line, like I said, probably half dozen houses, it doesn't show a main line at all to them. And it shows the, the main, the, the map that's in the sewer office, shows it veering off and going towards the, the north, but for some reason, it doesn't follow the roadway or towards the houses, at least on that map. That's touch, stuff we have to find and locate and make sure we find those taps, because ultimately, they're, they're getting sewage, they're on the sewer system. Barb says that she's billing the people for the sewer, but we gotta be able to replace those lines in the, in the proper position, so that's what we're working on currently.
You said the old lines are fifteen inches.
Some of them, yes.
And you would, you say that eight inch line's all that's necessary.
Gotta be sufficient, yeah, um.
What damage do the fifteen inch lines have? What is it from? What, what constitutes of needing to replace?
What constitutes may be replaced? They are allowing a lot of water into the system. And we're trying to eliminate that extra water ultimately because the s, uh, well, the main problem is, East End Pump Station, it overflows, because it gets too much water. And by replacing lines, we're not permitting the water, the groundwater or surface water to get into those lines and, and flow down to that pump station, trying to eliminate that as much as possible.
So if you take all that water and it comes through an eight inch line, isn't that gonna, I'm just, you know, in my simple little mind asking if you go through this fifteen inch pipe to an eight inch pipe and you have the same amount of water going into it, what's the?
Well, that's, that's it, we're, we're not, we don't wanna let that water get into our system.
Where's it gonna go?
It will be, stay in the ground instead of seeping into the, into the sewer pipe. And, and if need be, we will run, say, um, so-called a French drain and do a into an inlet, into a close inlet.
I know up by where I live, there's drainage is a real issue, people literally have ponds in their yards, we probably want, I think if you ask my neighbors, they want a bigger they'd want like.
They're a big fight.
Yeah.
Well, unfortunately, we can't, you, we can't be sending that to the sewage plant.
No, but if you're, you're talking volume of water, it's gonna have to go somewhere. And I know people around here have a lot in their basement cer- certain times anyway, ponds in their yard, you know, things like that. So I just, at that point, I don't know where they're at, that's where water's gonna go.
We wanna try to solve some of those problems by all means, okay? I'm not telling you we wanna eliminate that, we want to ultimately make this comprehensive as much as possible, okay? Because there's gonna be quite a bit of money spent trying to replace these sewer lines, until we understand that concept. That water, you want it to go somewhere, you don't want it to be in people's houses and whatnot. So if we can find easy places to put them into the, the storm sewer system, make it much easier and only hopefully drain it properly than needing to treat it at the sewage plant.
Right.
Then ultimately the system will work better for everybody. And we can do that, I mean, we're ultimately replacing the sewers, if a, if a storm sewer is in need of the same scenario of replacement, bring that to you guys as council members saying, this is in that area, should we spend the money and replace it at the same time? And, and make this so-called a comprehensive project, really doesn't add anything to our product, uh, our costs, it's only just construction, okay? And um, we're just replacing a line from say one inlet to another. And if there's a way we can eliminate a problem in some way by adding inlet or uh, allowing that water to get in the storm sewer easier, that's what we wanna do by all means. And if there's places, I have all the maps, if you can show me some places that we can fix, I'm, I'm all for it.
You haven't done any topographic studies where you've noticed where there's excess water versus well-drained areas?
These have, um, these plans don't have the, the topography on them. But all of our, all of our mapping has a topography. And it's just by one foot contours, so we can see where the water should go um naturally that way.
Sure, but I live on a hill, and guess what?
And it doesn't get that a lot of places, and that's fine. That's what I'm saying, we'd like to uh look to see if there's, if there's things that we can correct in that aspect.
Come up next time it's raining all heavy and trees are on, I'll see where it piles up.
No problem there, I've, I've got you there.
When you're done, though, you'll need it.
You show me where we're gone, that's not a problem. Um, but ultimately, that's our, our goal right now is, we wanna find the taps that, that are in the system, connect up what is uh needed to serve the people that are here. And then if there's issues at different places, we know that it's um uh, it's not, is it Anderson Street, maybe, that has a, a lot of, of storms inlets that are falling in?
Yeah.
And we're gonna be there, we might say, we're gonna replace a few inlets while we're there, just to try to make it a, a decent system. And um, like I said, if there's ways that we can capture more water in better places, then we're all for that. And for helping you guys, we'll go all the way to the, the.
Well, I know there's one I did by my house that was improperly installed. It's something, and I just wondered how many more around town are like that.
It seems like quite a few of them actually that we, we actually did locate are in, in serious need of, of some attention by all means. I'm not, I'm not putting the blame anywhere, it's just a matter of it's, the way uh everything works and we're doing our best to try to help it.
Is this an open discussion or just for a council?
Council or a council.
These fifteen inch lines, so back to my original question, what, what, um, what is called remizen and how compromised are they?
They are, they're three foot joints of pipe, okay? They're called, yeah, they're ventrified clay tile pipes. That every three feet, you have a joint that is, allows water to seep into those. Because there's, uh, in new pipe, there are thirteen foot joints. So you have a lot less joints, and at each joint, there's a gasket on the pipe that keeps extra, extraneous water from seeping into that joint. And that's our goal, is to reduce the amount of water getting into the sewer system. And ultimately overloading the pump station. The, the borough is under a corrective action plan to eliminate that water, get keep that pump station from, from overflowing, and that's what our ultimate goal is, to get out of that uh compliance issue with DEP that they're currently under. And hopefully set this up for long-term usage in, for the borough.
And what are these new pipes constructed at?
PVC.
Right.
PVC and plastic.
Yeah, I know what that is.
Okay.
Okay, so, right now we've got the old terracotta clay, whatever, those pipes that are allowing water in, which, correct me if I'm wrong, but in my simple little brain that's telling me that when the ground is waterlogged, instead of it putting pressure on those pipes those cracks actually allow it to go somewhere instead of putting pressure on the pipe. Now, with these PVC ones, if they have gaskets on them and the ground is really, really, really waterlogged and we all know mud's heavier than just putting on dirt, how is that going to um? and we all know mud's heavier than just putting on dirt, how is that going to, um, affect outward pressure on the pipes?
Really gonna be buried in.
Do you see what I mean?
It's gonna be buried in pea gravel, so it's actually gonna be a natural French drain that goes down through.
Yeah.
And then it'll daylight out, if it's really wet, they can put it into a storm inlet, you know? And those pipes are rated for pretty heavy PSI's for water and wastewater piping.
Yeah, the, the exterior water pressure is not an issue on the pipe as far as, uh, pressure or so-called any kind of, um, collapse of anything. Um, that's not, hasn't never been the issue. The more issues, if you put it extremely deep, then you got weed of, of ground above it. Um, but that has to be quite, quite deep, um.
I'm just concerned too about people's foundations and such, you know, that right now, if all this excess water has somewhere to go.
Mm-hmm.
If, you know, what is gonna, what could possibly happen if the water can't go there anymore? And it starts to really saturate the ground? And, I don't know, I've heard there's a lot of springs through here.
Sure.
You know?
Mm-hmm. Well, hilltop of Montu, it's a spring.
Yeah, because the community, well, it used to be like up in the vault or something, you know, Pope Island.
And by all means, like I said, if it would get to our trench of our new, of our sewer line and we are near a, an inlet, we'll put a, an outlet. I will, we have a standard detail every so often to put a, a clay barrier in our, our trench that would stop the flow of water so-called downhill or downstream. And add, at, up, just in the upstream side of that clay barrier, we put a perforated pipe over to a, an inlet. It, it, it's only gonna be two, three, four feet deep, but it would.
How much can you guarantee these subterranean fixes? I mean, it's, you know, what, what's your success rate with keeping water where you want it to go versus where it's just gonna naturally go?
Well, it's, it wants to flow downhill, obviously, man, that's natural.
Yes, but like I said, I live on a hill, and it doesn't flow downhill, it's just.
Right.
Right there.
Um, but now we will have a, a, a new explanation, if it were in front of your house, that the water can so-called get into easier than what it could in natural ground. And ultimately, that water, if it can get into that trench, is going to follow that trench line because it can get there easier, and that's what it's gonna follow, it follows path of least resistance. And we've had very good success with that as far as outletting lines into, in the inlet, stopping water, um.
I just feel like there's a possibility that in fixing one thing, you're going to cause something, another problem somewhere else.
Yeah, which then will be told if you're a problem, as the homeowner.
I'm just telling it out there, because I know there's a lot of people that, well, you four in the back, sorry. How many of you get water in your basements or have water pulled in your yard or have, uh, uh, any area on your property where water?
Runs right out of the ground, comes out from underneath Bruce's house every time it rains, and it runs right out in the middle of my backyard.
Okay.
Fill up eight to ten inches of feet by sixty-five to seventy feet, long by twenty-five feet wide.
Did you watch?
All right, this is, no more public comment, this is for the borough stuff. You know, if you wanna go meet with them and go over that, bring it to a meeting, that's fine.
I'm sure there's a lot of people with questions, and I was just asking for myself, so I just wanted to know a few things.
So, yeah, continue on our investigation and trying to finish up as quickly as we can. Um, Jesse's been on me trying to get finished, which we definitely wanna be finished also, just a matter of making sure it's correct before we, we do finish. And, um, we will have to go for a, a few permits, we will have a highway permit out on Route Six. We will have a, um, a construction NPDES permit because of the size of our project that we'll be applying for. Um, and we'll have a, a water quality management permit that we'll apply for, for a, an upgraded pump station out on East End. So, we're working on all different aspects of that currently, and, and hopefully have a better update come next month.
So, I guess my question, just typical questions that I ask you especially, is, um, it sounds like we still have mapping to do, right?
I guess you call someone mapping, um, we have investigations to find that stuff, yes.
Confirmation.
Yeah.
And, uh, so that would still be preventing you from doing the, uh, NPDES permit, I'm sure?
That's correct, yeah, but we have to know our actual disturbance of going to be when it comes time to replace this.
Okay, uh, is the East End pump station designed or is that kind of still gonna push back?
It is designed, I haven't, uh, finalized the permit application as far as combining it and sending it out yet. But it is, um, to the best of our ability being fully designed and ready for, to go in for a permit.
Uh, and then my final question is, are we still on time for October, November's middle for the, uh, uh, pen estimate?
I honestly doubt it, because those permits are gonna take longer than that time period to, uh, receive. And BEB requires us to have those permits in hand before we make our final submission.
Right.
Um, now that, uh, possible to count?
What do you think, December, January?
I, I would say the next round is more reasonable. That's what October, November, and January application time period is our, I mean, that's later than we would've liked, but, but, um, still trying to get there.
So, I'm gonna ask my question again, what is wrong with the pipes now that these new ones are going to fix? What, what, what is structurally wrong with, what's there now? Are they broken, are they cracked, are they crushed, are they, you know, what?
What are the two things that are going on that need fixing?
Okay, we haven't, structurally, they still work.
Okay.
And now, we, we haven't videoed them completely to know that they're all in pristine shape by any means, okay? Um, but there are different places where they allow roots to grow down into them. And Brett will just tell me, they, they pull a root ball out of someplace, ultimately, that's holding water back and creating issues upstream of that position, if it's, if you got roots, was that?
A root ball is all they picked up?
At, at that position, meaning, you know, every, every joint has a possibility of growing, growing roots and allowing roots to grow into it. And it's, and when, we could see on what we made a date. What's that?
I said, I've got Queen Isley's, when they picked up there, its weeds grow right up through the curb. I mean, if something wants to grow, it's gonna grow.
We're, we're looking to upgrade our system, okay? Plain and simple, we're looking to upgrade the system to get rid of these terracotta, I know, terracotta pipes. And, you know, with the, with the joints that are there, the terracotta and stuff with the clay piping.
Yes.
It's easily where the roots will get in and grow out and, and end up with a root ball. And that, that can happen all over this town. So, we're trying to get the, this plan together, trying to get this plan together to be able to get the grant to redo it, just like Eldred has done and Shingle House.
Okay.
You know, we're trying to get this done, I mean.
The hydrotropism.
For, for an our time period, life period, for anybody that's in here, the life period, a lot of this might be okay. But why don't we look at our grandkids and our great-grandkids coming down the road to have this straightened out for them? You know, I'm tired of nickel and diamond thing.
I'm not, I haven't died in anything.
She has to see, she has questions.
There's people that are million-dollaring things, why can't I ask a few questions about it? Hydrotropism is hydrotropism.
I know, but you go off, well, I got roots coming out of my curving and stuff, what's that have to do with?
If something is going to grow, it's going to grow. When you have hydrotropism involved, that's something gravitates toward water.
It's not gonna get into that type of PVC piping, the way it's designed.
But if you're concerned about things growing towards things, that's what happens. Certain things, their roots automatically go toward water. And if you have this water building up in other places, because it's not going into the system anymore.
Basements and stuff, just like the Methodist church up, that's their problem, uh, was our problem with the church, because we had water coming in the basement. Well, we got it corrected, costs is whatever, thousands of dollars to get it taken care of, but, you know, we took care of it. That's our problem, that's not the borough's problem that we're getting water in there.
You're right, that's your problem, but work was done by the borough to cause that problem, no, it's just something that happened.
Well, I don't know.
Something, you know, having something that happened is one thing.
Houses in here is those stone, stone foundations. You are not gonna stop, you know, that water, that groundwater from going through them. You know, because the, the way they laid those and stuff, it's just not gonna stop the, the water. You're gonna have to do something around it, the structure of it to take care of it.
Anything else, Marty?
Not presently, but, um, well, we will be continuing to videotape those sewer lines over this month. And hopefully, finish up as quickly as we can, find, uh, everything we need to, to find another design.
I see the Wednesday, and we're gonna use that?
Yes, we'll be down in that area.
We're gonna do the main street, we're gonna have to get traffic control to cover that line.
We'll get one, um, the south side and take care of it down there too.
Sure you got a long drive?
It's all right.
Tom, I was told that we'd have an opportunity to talk about this if we had questions about the sewer.
I said he would talk to you after the meeting, is what you were told.
That's what I'm wondering, when that, was that tonight?
I told you, he would be here, he could answer your questions after the meeting.
That's all.
All right, new business.
Actually, no, let's, he said last month, you were checking in to see why we wouldn't, why, or, or was it why we went to aeration instead of having the current situation of, would you call it facultative ponds?
Facultative looings?
Yeah.
Say that again, why have we left?
He said, he contacted you, and you were gonna check with the DEP as, as far as why?
You said you were gonna see why, you know, as far as the aeration, you know, that these ponds were designed just to, like a septic tank to, you know, that it, you know, everything eats off, the bacteria eats everything down. And where we have this aeration in it, you were gonna look, ask, look back in records or whatever to see why we started putting aeration into it and, uh, aerators or whatever there, you know? Because I, you know, I'm curious, you know, why would we have to have them if it was designed without them?
Correct. And, um, having got that far, we, we checked here to see if there was the permits. Um, if anyone was permitted to add aeration to those or.
The water quality permit.
Right, went up for a water quality management permit, Jesse's been, uh, active in that also. Um, we haven't found it yet. It might take a, a trip to, uh, Needville, to their northwest office to check, to see what permits they have for that. We just haven't got there yet.
I, I believe they sent me all the digitized stuff that they had, so it would be.
And you say this, you say a facultative will work up here?
Um.
Everything I read says no, it's always the warmer climate, anything in the northern hemisphere isn't generally recommended.
I, I didn't design the system, so I can't tell you.
No, and I understand that, but see, systems change as time goes on, especially as knowledge is gained. Maybe back when the system was first designed, they didn't know.
That iteration will help.
We have the aeration, well, actually, we don't have the aeration, they're floating, but we don't have it. At least that's what I'm told. We have aerators in the pond, are they working?
Yeah, they're working, aren't they?
Two of them.
Yeah.
Two of them.
And then we have the solar.
Right, because solar needs a mixing.
Okay, now we know we have two operating.
All right. Move on to new business, shuttle location, any, anybody fills in on that?
Yep, so, um, the Kenzie Bridge Festival is gonna be on, uh, September the twentieth and the twenty-first. And it's, you know, there's only one road into the park and one road out, and I'm sure everybody's familiar, like, when the festival happens and when leaf season is in, how hard it is to, to get in and out of the park with traffic. So, the, um, DC and our staff, they've already, if you've been out there, you're probably seeing that they've already got, you know, the, the road into the actual park staked off, so you can't park. And so, um, when we do the festival through the foundation, we offer, um, shuttle service. Um, either if you're gonna park on either side of Lynn Home, um, so like when you, when you're coming out of the park you're this way, you know, towards town, or this way, towards the game commission sheds. You know, you can get picked up by the, the trolley or the school bus and then come in that way. So, what we're trying to do is encourage people to use the shuttle service as much as possible. Especially this year because there was, um, construction, they moved quite a bit of the construction equipment out of the park, but they still have places in the park that are blocked off there, you know, we've, we've lost some of the parking, like in the overflow by the General Kane Trail, and then over where they have their equipment sheds and things like that. So, we're trying to reserve as much space in the park as possible for, um, handicapped, uh, older, you know, folks uh, that have trouble, you know, walking or have physical problems. Um, and then also the vendors that are going in and out of there, um, ambulance crew, and, um, speakers and things like that, the musicians. Um, so, uh, I would like some ideas, um, I have some of mine, but just in like, in a general discussion, you know, Frank, you know, we said Center Street, where you're talking about the Davis lot, like.
When?
The, the safest place to pick people up here in town with the best amount of parking?
That's if Davis will let people park there.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think anybody parked there, I think the last time we was done with the Heritage, it was more of, I guess, people in town wanting to go there. The bus sat on Center Street, walked up. I, I never remember anybody parking.
The foundation always does it, Heritage Co.
Oh, I didn't know, it was, it just happened to happen during, what was that?
No, we have these signs, so my husband wanted me to bring his sign, because he's very proud of it. We have to redo it, but anyway, he, he's got these little signs made, so when you're in town, uh, you'll get to, you'll see these signs. Um, we're hoping to have like two pickup locations, one on this side of town, one on the other side. So, maybe if the VFW would be interested, or, um, I, I don't know how much we're gonna be able to use the fire hall lot, but like the Davis lot or something like that. But you could get picked up in town on the school bus, which my husband will be driving. Um, and he will then charter you right out to the bridge, and then you can come right back out, and it'll save some of the traffic congestion.
Have people been interested in carpool?
For carpool, I know that, um, Carol with the, the Trail Club mentioned that she wanted to help with, uh, using the trail, the rail trail, and using the golf cart to go back up and down.
I didn't hear anything on the golf cart, I'll talk to her tomorrow.
She emailed me and said that might be a, a potential too, but also, um, show people more of the trail itself. If, if that can be figured out, I don't know if that's a given yet, but, um, does anybody have any other suggestions? What might be like a good visible location with enough parking that's also safe enough for people?
If you talk to Mike Winters, he's the VFW, or the, uh, Legion Commander.
Okay.
If they don't have anything going on, it's not rented this weekend, that's a big lot, easy for a bus to get in and out. You know, I don't know if they let you, but probably the best spot.
Yeah, as long as it's not being rented out, I'm sure they probably let you use that lower parking.
Okay.
You have somebody here to park cars, so they park any direction they want to.
Yep. Yeah. But that, I mean, that's pretty much it, just like you said, just encouraging people as much as possible to use the shuttle service. Because it, it is, it is really hard to get in and out of there, um, and I know we've been to different festivals in other state parts. Uh, and if they have a shuttle service, it does seem to be pretty much the way to go. Anybody got any questions?
Uh, I talked, uh, you talked to Tommy for his lot, and, uh, lower fire hall lot, that's not usable, or?
I have to ask.
All right.
Because they're doing the boot drive, and I don't know.
I don't know, when will the end, it's gonna make sure they keep it open.
Open for the fire.
Yeah.
Yeah, so they're, yeah, they need somebody there to.
All right, uh, they had number two that we.
Yep.
All right, so then the other three have been done too, or the other two? So, there's no other?
Well, actually, we heard from the lawyer on Hamlet.
What's that?
We heard from the lawyer on Hamlet.
Yeah.
And your thoughts?
Basically, I mean, saying that we can do what we're, or, you know, we, it can be done, what he's saying, by what I take of it.
Ah, so, but he never really answered the question if somebody could be charged less. And then you have the situation of the contract, where it states based on the lawyer, you know, different things that we do, like the contract for the mixers, there's, my understanding, you're supposed to pay a portion of that. And I don't ever recall that happening.
Uh, shared common facilities that can be taken into effect. Uh, it's my belief that it was misused, uh, by the prior sewer authority for things that were optional or wanted to be done, not catastrophic failure, they pay us a percentage.
Twenty percent.
And, well, there was language in the contract, it's also, if I remember correctly from years ago, supposed to be evaluated and adjusted every year based off of an audit and what the operational cost, et cetera, et cetera, would be. Um, we're actually in the process of getting a new agreement, we had talked about it, it never had happened. Because, sure, we had the Hamlin Township, wouldn't sign the old agreement, or the new agreements, we're working on the one from, I don't know, two thousand fourteen, before they even came online.
Two thousand eight.
My suggestion, Frank, I've read your emails, forward the email, Frank's questions to the attorney, and he can answer. I'm gonna sit here and play ping pong with you all night.
I.
Stop playing ping pong.
I don't have it.
Oh, you don't, you don't have it?
I don't know what you're talking about, I never saw another email.
Okay, I'll send, I'll forward you the email.
I don't.
No, I'm just saying, that's why I'm bringing it up right now in front of council, Frank's got these detailed points and disagrees with the legal opinion of the attorney.
I haven't seen it, so I couldn't tell you.
Okay, forward to you, anybody got a problem with that, we'll send his.
No.
Email to his solicitor, and he can answer your questions directly. And that, I make a motion to adjourn. See you.
On your lead, I have one thing.
Second and.
Brett and Jesse.
The ambulance needs help. They need a van. We got, when they renewed the license for the ambulance, they only renewed it for one year, instead of three, they put it on probation. It wants to make ninety-five percent of our calls. At the end of that year, they can shut it down, not renew the license. We gotta get some people, you know, get on some EMTs and Y and Z to get it going, to help keep it. Because we are the only volunteer ambulance association in McKee County.
Might have to pay some people, and I mean, I mean, we might have to pay somebody to help man, you know, the community.
You may have to, when it comes out to it, but you're gonna have to have paramedics, they're twenty-four seven.
I know, but.
You know, and.
We got a year, it's gonna take longer than a year to get anybody certified, you know?
Right, I realize that, people who want to become just regular EMTs, the ambulance will help with that, when we don't possibly.
No.
So, figure time out. But it's just that thought, at the end of that year, what happens? Well, they extended it, they shut us down.
I hope not, we run far in Kane's calls too.
I didn't talk, I don't talk more than more than ever, now it's day alone, and he said, okay, we look this up for people. They gotta know what's wrong.
All right, motion is made, and secretary to close the meeting.
So are we having public comments again or?
No.
No.
No, it's not allowed anymore.
Took their way.
Aye.